Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 8th at 7:00 PM. Ms. Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Charlie Davidson. George Glover.
Here.
Linda Westhafer.
Here.
Charles Swankie.
Here.
Terry Osborne.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If you'll please stand, City Clerk Rug will join us or lead our invocation, and Sean Fox will lead the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come here this evening to ask for wisdom and guidance. May our decisions be productive and may our decisions reflect your will. Help us to listen to one another with open hearts and minds and grant us the unity to work together. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, we'll start with approval of the agenda. Jim?
I would move that we approve the agenda.
Brandy?
Second.
Thank you. And I guess before we go on that, I just want to say Councilman Davidson notified me earlier today that he had a scheduling conflict and would not be here, so we will proceed. Okay, motion by Jim, seconded by Brandy, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have awards and presentations. We've got some proclamations tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first proclamation, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state and city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas prevention is a community responsibility. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, local, state, and national governments, and whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention, and whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. Now, therefore, the Mayor and Council does hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urges all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this country.
Thank you, Dana.
Okay. Arbor Day. Whereas National Arbor Day is April 25th, 2025, and the theme for Arbor Day this year is Trees Root Our Community. And whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day beside a side for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees play a role in combating climate change, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, providing a habitat for wildlife, are a renewable resource for paper, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, the Mayor and Council does hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the city of Park City, Kansas, and urges all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of the community today and for future generations.
Very good. Thank you.
Do you have the certificate? That's what I was kind of waiting for.
They're signed on the counter.
Oh, okay.
They are signed. Too soon, maybe? Yes.
Yes.
Well, while Sean's gone, let's, I'd accept, while Sean's gone, if we just second, I would accept a motion individually to approve each proclamation. Terry?
I, I move to approve the National Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
Thank you, Troy.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Terry, seconded by Troy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay. And for the Arbor Day. Jim?
I move that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay.
Yay. Thank you so much. I'm Vicki Roper. I'm the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Director at the Kansas Children's Service League, and I'm here with two of our major, major partners. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves. We've got somebody from the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County and the Wichita region of the Department for Children and Families. Do you want to say anything?
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
I think most of you know who I am. I'm Ashley Coleman. I am not only the mayor of Kichai, but I am also the Support Services Program Administrator for Wichita Region, DCF.
Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'm Lori Chandler. I am the Education and Outreach Manager at the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County.
Yes.
So, as you can tell, prevention happens in partnership. We have a huge coalition that covers this area, the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, that is working on making this region safer for children and families. And you could see from the new proclamation today that it is powered by hope and strengthened by prevention, and that prevention happens in partnership, and we're all coming together to do that. So community is super important. I can't tell you the number of times this community has made a huge, huge, huge difference in families' lives. We now have two family resource centers in the area that can serve the entire county, and family resources is probably, centers is probably becoming one of the top strategies for families to experience a one-stop shop and to be able to find the resources they need in the communities they live in in order to be successful. And childcare is a big part of that, and understanding childcare in this community is no small feat, and we have a lot of people really, you know, working together around all of that. So thank you for signing the proclamation, Mayor and City Council members. The pinwheel, you should be seeing around Wichita, and everything's coming up, the Color Blue Fountains and Kellogg and the historic Sedgwick County Courthouse and other things. And the pinwheel stands for happy, healthy childhoods, and that's what we want for all of our children. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you, Ashley and Lori, for joining us. We appreciate the reminder in advance to do this because we're honored to endorse your proclamation. Thank you.
It's beautiful, by the way.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, Council. You are one of seven proclamations this year, which is up three from last year with my, some of my efforts to connect with our local communities. So I just want to say, say thank you for your, your two of this. I know you guys did this last year as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, public forum. We have nobody has signed up for public forum tonight. Staff reports. Did you have anything tonight, Sean? Thank you. We'll move to Ken's consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Terry?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Jim?
I'd second that.
Seeing no further discussion, motion by Terry, seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Onto new business. Discuss and consider city branding.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In January, based on previous discussions related to the water towers being painted, council contracted with Gardner Designs to evaluate our existing brand and flower, and flag, excuse me, to determine if certain attributes or elements of each could be incorporated into a refresh to promote better cohesion with an overall update. Tonight, we have Bill Gardner with us, and if possible, we may be joined by Adam Anderson. He is the primary designer on this project, but he is in Omaha, Nebraska. So we have a Zoom link up, and if he dials in, he'll be the one presenting along with Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Adam Anderson, who's been involved in not only the design of the wayfinding signage that's currently in the city and the flag, is our senior designer and art director. He actually moved down to, here to join us here for a number of years, but his family's up in Nebraska, so he's going to be joining us this evening via Zoom. We got him coming in, or?
He hasn't dialed in yet, so.
Okay. Looks like that might be him ready to join in. Is it, nope. Call Adam Anderson mobile.
Calling Adam Anderson.
Technology at workforce, right? Hello? Hi, Adam. Were you dialing in?
Yeah, 7:15. I'm, I'm here. I'm just waiting. I was waiting until 7:15, but.
Hop in right now because the council's going to hang in for you. Okay.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and kind of start this out. Just a tiny bit of history. So it was about 1989, and I was actually approached by the city of Park City to develop a, an identity for them with Gardner Design. Here's Adam now.
Okay. Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Sorry about that. I was, I'm going to blame Sean. I was told to jump on at 7:15, so.
Okay. Adam, at, at the time that we developed the identity, one of the things that we were told was, you know, Park City's a growing and developing community.
Sean, I, I can't hear what they were saying. Would you be able to, or someone who's?
Adam, I'm going to move this up here, too. Can you hear me now? Adam, can you hear me?
I guess not.
We may or may not.
Ready.
Okay. At the time, we were told that Park City is the entertainment capital of Kansas because 81 Speedway is here, and of course, the column seam was being built, and the dog tracks, so on and so forth. And at the time that the logo that you currently have was developed, you know, it, it wasn't near the community that it is today. And I love the fact that we've continued to be involved with Park City and that, you know, we've, we've seen the maturity of it, and we've seen the development of it, and it really is such a center of activity now. We were approached by the city to talk to them about the water tower and how we might be able to find a way that we could consolidate some of the imagery from the flag and some of the imagery from the logo and start to make them live together. And having developed both of them, Adam Anderson started to investigate, and I will tell you that, I'm going to cut to the chase, that the logo itself is going to go through very, very minor refreshes in here, except for some color that we're going to take a look at. And Adam, if you don't mind, I'm going to have you go ahead and hop in here and share with the council now what the exploration got into. Okay?
Yeah, no problem. Sean, if you want to jump, jump ahead. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes. So basically, as Bill just mentioned, our objective here, I think ultimately, was to, to, to better be able to let Park City be represented, represented as a whole with both the flag and the logo. Obviously, for many of you that have been around for a long time, this logo was developed probably some, you know, 25, 30 years ago, and it's still true to form. Even the color palette is, is kind of still basically what it was ever since the beginning. So one of our objectives in this, and I think Bill just kind of alluded to this, was that we would like to not only subtly adjust the logo itself to bring it, just to, to give it a little bit more modifications, but also to be able to tie the flag with the Park City logo so that as they live in unity throughout the city, they really are kind of joined together. And a lot of that will be done with color, and we'll talk about that here a little bit more as we roll through here. Sean, do you want to jump to the next slide for me? So, and, and this is hopefully intentional. These two logos should essentially look almost identical, but if you start to look closely at them, there's a handful of things that we went in and did and very meticulously kind of addressed certain areas to try and make them, like I said, bring it a little bit more current. So one thing that you may notice right away, if you focus the wave, the flag itself that we have there, when it was originally created, was a very organic kind of natural flow. So there was not really any sort of rhyme or reason the way it went up and down. And so what we wanted to do to better mimic the current actual Park City flag was to have a consistent up, down, up, down with a similar angle, as well as adjusting some of the letter forms to make them a little bit more current. You'll notice specifically on, on the word "city", how if you look at the edges of the letter "I" and the "T" and the "Y," how they are kind of pointy. That's what's called a slab serif. We ended up easing those just slightly so that instead of those being kind of these hard blocks, they have this kind of flow curve upward, and it's just a little bit of easing it. And we, we also, I won't point them out. It's, it's a lot of, if anyone has any questions later, I'm glad to go into all the details, but also just fix some of the slight little imperfections that had been kind of created within the logo again. The fact that it was done so long ago, there's tools and techniques now that we have to kind of make things a little bit cleaner and fresher and be able to be scaled both very, very large as well as very, very small. Okay, next slide, please, Sean. So this maybe gives a little bit of an indicator kind of to how we, how we approach this. So this little zigzag pink that you'll notice directly below, below the flag there, you'll notice that we took the element of the flag and placed it directly in there. And that's what I was talking about when we're talking about taking the same angles as, as that are directly taken from the flag and then using that same kind of up, down, same equal pattern motion, same distance, same roundness, and then applying that directly to the wave within the Park City logo. We felt like that was a subtle little way of being able to tie those two together just a little bit more as where the Park City logo previously, as we talked about, was much more organic in its nature. So just wanted to, wanted to show that a little bit closer. Next slide, please. So again, we talked about, right now, the Park City identity is true to the color scheme that was created, you know, years ago when it was created. And in all honesty, I think a lot of us feel that it's dated and understandably so. Anything that's been around for, for that long without any updates is going to have some date to it. So. So yeah, I, I need to be careful. Hey, I'm, I'm 40 years old, so I, I'm preaching to the choir here. The, when we created the flag a handful of years ago, we were able to kind of hone in on some more, more current and contemporary color palettes. And when I say that, I want to be careful because we, we also, when we created the, the flag, we didn't want something that would fall flat, you know, within a few years and feel old. So the colors that we chose, I think, are relevant and current, but yet they are simple and subtle enough that they will hopefully withstand at least another 10, 15, 20 years, and then maybe we'll address the flag in, in 20 years from now. But as you can see here, basically taking the Park City logo color palette with the flag palette, some of the colors are a little bit awkward together. For example, the, the color in the word "city" and then the color of the lower part of the almond shape within the Park City flag are almost identical, but they're different enough that they kind of almost like, it should be, should they be the same? Should they be different? Why are they so close but not quite? Also, the purple, I think, is just a color, a dated color within the yellow and blue palette. So our objective is to say, what if we, because we did these slight modifications to the Park City logo, what if we were also to go back and rather than totally scrap the logo, because we've established after speaking with people in the community and some on the board, that there is a good amount of equity within the Park City logo. So having these modest updates, but also what if we updated the color to better match the flag and vice versa, so that as we look at it in context of the city, when you drive around on signage in different areas and you see both different elements that they can kind of tie together better. So Sean, if you want to jump ahead to the next section? So we have three options that we're going to show for color palette on the part, on the new updated Park City colors. So if you can, I'll talk about each of them just very briefly. It probably, for the most part, goes without saying, but at the end, we'll show them all together, and ultimately, we can, we can discuss or, or vote, or however we want to ultimately talk about this. But we derive the green color that we're using on the wave now, which is directly taken from the flag, as well as altering the color in the word "city" just slightly and going, rather than having that blue that was so close to the flag, just using the same blue so that there's, it simplifies the whole process. But then, in this one, we did keep the yellow, which I think is kind of a primary color and even has been within Park City through signage and different elements. And we, we actually really like the, the two blue, green, yellow combination. You can see along the bottom there, seeing all those colors together, and we feel it still has a very contemporary, fresh feel, but still evokes some of the traditional Park City colors with, with, without going, you know, over the top. So that's option number one. Option number two is, again, simplifying this down extremely, and this probably just wouldn't be our top choice, if I had to be honest. I think I like, I like some of the other one, the other two a little bit better. But if we were to say, hey, let's, let's make this ultra simple and basically just use two colors from the flag, the two blues, the darker blue, as well as the light blue, and letting those be kind of our two primary colors which identify Park City, and then letting the flag have its own separate element of green within there, so that yet they still, you know, as you look at them together, they, they fit cohesively and they work well. And the Park City logo has been much more simplified down with the blue color palette. Okay, option number three. And this is the last of the three that we have for you. And this is, again, essentially saying, what if we just took the exact color palette from the flag and utilize that into the Park City logo itself? And so again, not having any extra colors at all, but, but all the colors that would represent it. I, I don't think I mentioned this about the green, but, but one of the things, and one of the reasons why we use the green within the flag is that it evoked this sort of outdoorsy park kind of feel to it, and we really like that. So obviously, your name is Park City, and in a lot of ways, you guys have embraced that. So love the, love, love the incorporation of the green personally into the wave on this. And I think having the little whirligig, as, as Dana calls it, on top of the "I" in that light blue, I think is, is a nice way of kind of pulling the flag and the Park City logo together. So Sean, if you want to jump to the last section here, and this is, wanted to show all three of those logo color iterations next to the flag, and so you can kind of start to envision or imagine them, if you will, in context out into the city. So with that being said, I think that's what we have for you. So I don't know if you guys have questions, or Sean, or Bill, if you guys want to add anything to it.
Adam, I, I might just kind of add in here. So really, one of the most critical aspects of, one of the most critical aspects of any brand is really its color. And it's one of those things that is most easily identifiable, especially at a distance. And as you start talking about water towers, you're talking about people are going to be looking at that pretty large scale at a pretty serious distance. And when we start to think about color, we, we love what we had done for your flag, and I think the community does as well, but we recognized from the beginning that that magenta kind of violet color that had been used originally in the logo was popular in the late 80s, but has kind of lost. but has kind of lost a little bit of its resonance with people over a period of time. And Adam's point is well-taken that the, you know, when you take a look at the green and you think about the term or the name Park City and this idea of parks and outdoors and the beauty of the area and the rolling hills in this area, I think that what you do is you start to imagine that that's not just a flag waving, that it could be the topography that's here, it could be the involvement of the green from nature and the likes in here, and it's just a really engaging kind of color palette. I think that Adam and I are kind of leaning towards either number one or number three. It's obviously up to you as a council, but one of the things that really starts to happen here is that it keeps you from needing to worry about changing this sign, which is right behind you, or it's as easy as just removing the words "park" out here long enough to hit a good spray painter and then return with the same sign, but just changing a color on it. There are a number of things that we recognize are going to be relatively easy for us to adopt or to adapt as part of this change in here. I'm glad to answer any questions any of you might have. More thoughts? And the water tower comes next. Once we get this, then we'll go ahead and design whatever we're going to do on the water tower.
Thank you. Jim? Just for, to be specific on the, so when we look at it on a water tower, we're going to be going Park City flag, Park City flag, all the way around.
Probably, well, okay.
Or am I getting ahead of the game?
Yeah, yeah. We've yet to design the water tower, Jim, on this. One of the nice things is that we can incorporate both the flag and potentially the logo into the water tower, but I think the critical thing is for those people that aren't familiar with Park City to get the name quickly, because that's typically, you know, what you're going to be looking at that water tower for is to identify where you are. Does that?
Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to understand, at least get a feel for that, but I love the flag, you know.
Thank you.
We worked together on.
We do, we do too, and you guys have done such a tremendous job of getting it out there and making sure that it really represents you well, that we're, what we really are is we're really tickled that we're finally able to kind of bring these two together.
Yeah.
Because we have a love for both components, but honestly, I'm not going to be sad to see the magenta go.
Just to weigh in on it, I'm with you all on that I like the green. So, I'm either, I'm probably, three is my first choice, one is my second choice, but I want to see what everybody else thinks, and I just wanted to weigh in and go from there.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
George Glover?
Yeah, Bill, thanks for your input on this. You've been working with us for some time. I appreciate that, all the work you guys have done. I actually like three as well. I like the blue above the "I" and how you guys have brought that out with the "I" look and how it flows with the flag.
Yeah.
The color of the flag, the blue above the "I." So, I would be most interested in three, and then one is my last option.
Okay, very cool.
Randy?
So, I was gonna suggest, but then I back away, because then you talk about, then we don't have to change some of this, but that star in replace of the squiggly.
Yeah.
Of the city.
Yeah.
But because of the whole change in things, I'll back away from that. But I like option three.
Oh, thank you very much. Adam, there's a few more to kind of sign in here, but so far, your number three is And of course, it's entirely up to you at your discretion where we end up going on with this. I would be delighted to answer any other questions that you might have on this, so.
I mean, personally, I.
Yeah, Terry.
I too prefer three.
Yep.
Mainly because, you know, we have a, basically, a three-color flag.
Yeah.
Gives us the same, the same three-color logo and not introducing the fourth color in the logo versus the flag, so that's, or three is my preference.
Very good. Thank you, Terry.
Lynda?
I just want to say, I'm still a fan of the purple. That's fine, it's okay. But I'm newer to the council, so what does the star represent?
Sure. So, at the time that we did the star, one of the things that we wanted to indicate to people was the crossroads of Park City. And Park City is uniquely located at the intersection of 35, 96, and 54, so that it was actually a symbolism of this central point at which you had the crossroads of three elements kind of coming together, but it was also this spark of the imagination of the community, the spark of the energy of the community, that when everything intersects in one place, you get this greater than the sum of your parts.
Okay, I was with Brandy. I kind of liked the star replacing this really.
Yeah. I, you know, and I love the star too, but honestly, because the star is the shape that it is, trying to put that up on top of that "I" is going to make it really tall. Yeah. And Adam, I don't know, did we include a stacked version in here or not? Is there, is there one more slide in there? Yeah.
I didn't even realize, I forgot we had one.
One of the things that happens is when we create an identity, we want to make sure that not every, not every opportunity is as strong horizontal, but we also have a stacked or a more square version that we typically work with, in particular, on the street signs in the community. You'll notice that we have the Park City logo down there at one end, but this gives us the ability to stack that logo in those situations where it's necessary and it becomes pretty cost-effective. It knocks it down to two colors, you lose your blue in there, but it's a modest shift.
Charles?
Absolutely, number three.
Okay. Charles says number three too, so we're, John's the only one that's not spoken up yet.
I'm told I have no artistic ability.
So, that's why you hired us.
So, that's why I go last. I was also thinking of the star thing on top of the "I" as well, and I was trying to find a way just to incorporate whatever, I guess, aspects of the shapes on the flag underneath it, also on the logo, but.
Yeah, I'll change your mind real quick here. If you remove that whirligig and put that star up there, we're going to need to change that sign and the one out there at the entry to the city and the one.
Those are cheaper than painting the water tower.
Yeah. Good, good point, good point. No. You know, it's also good to have that point of differentiation. I think what's going to happen is you're going to find that there is this level of consistency that's built in the color palette itself in there that's really going to tie this together and give us the flag its own unique perspective, and it gives the logo its own unique perspective. But, there you go.
I don't like one, I could say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Troy?
Well, I'm obviously outnumbered. I like number one.
Troy, I actually like number one too, so you and I can go have a drink together.
I just, I just see the yellow as, you know, it's the big sun.
Yeah.
And it kind of incorporates Kansas, it's not just Park City. And, I don't know, it just stands out a little more to me, but obviously, I'm outnumbered.
You have no artistic ability.
Yeah, I've been told that too.
This is, I think this was a straw poll, so you guys have the opportunity to make that, make that call on your own.
Thank you. Lynda?
I actually would vote for number one also, if I'm being honest, but I truly thought that that "I" was supposed to represent a "T" as a resident of the town. I thought it was going to be a tree. I thought that was indication of the "I" kind of being a tree with that whirligig on top of it, so.
You know, that's the beauty of everybody having their own subjective opinion. I love that.
Very good.
I like that idea. Okay. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, folks. Adam, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we'll move to item two, discuss and consider economic incentive for Park Center Apartments.
Park City Apartments LLC made application for property tax exemption for economic development purposes with the intention to construct equipped 116-unit apartment complex located in Park Center between Berquist and Stewart Drives on Newport Street. They have completed the required tax abatement cost-benefit analysis and based on 100% abatement, projects a positive benefit cost ratio to the city of 2.28. I would like to mention that each one of your deists, there is an updated sheet. Erronously, the first cost-benefit analysis included the school district of 262 Valley Center versus 259. Park City is in 259. So, there's an updated sheet showing a better cost-benefit ratio to the USD 259 of 6.22. Resolution 87-2013, establish Park City's incentive policy, outlines incentive exemptions based on capital investment, new job creation, and export sales. Based on a capital investment of approximately $18 million, a 10-year projection of the property taxes for all entities would be right at 2.9 million. And of course, we have Sarah here to cover further.
My name was on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Steele, Gilmour and Bell, with Bond Council to the city, and have worked on, oh, thank you, Sean. I'm sure, yeah, you got all that. We have worked on this resolution, and it authorizes up to slightly over 25 million. And so, that should be more than sufficient to cover the total cost of the project. The benefits that are derived from these multifamily housing revenue bonds, which is just another fancy name for industrial revenue bonds, are that the project will get a sales tax exemption on all of the materials that are going into construction. It also qualifies for a property tax exemption, and you do have the ability to request a payment in lieu of taxes, certainly on the existing value of the land and any other negotiation that you would like to do with the developers. But the resolution before you is an expression of your intent. It is not the final action. We'll come back when the, when the facility is closer to completion and ask you to pass an ordinance that will actually authorize the issuance of these bonds. These are in no way an obligation of the city. They do not count against the city's debt. It is purely an accommodation to the developers to give them the two benefits that I mentioned, the sales tax exemption and the property tax exemption on the project. Based on, I think Mr. Fox already said, but based on the capital investment alone, it does appear to qualify for 100%? Is that correct, Sean?
100% was what the cost-benefit analysis that Steve Robb out of Pittsburgh ran was at 100%.
Correct. And again, you can have a payment in lieu of taxes for the existing value of the land, so nothing's taken off the tax rolls, and otherwise, it will be an addition to the land that will go on the tax rolls after a 10-year period. The developers are here, Mike Brand and a couple other gentlemen with him. If you do have any specific questions on the project or would like to hear from him, I'd be happy to stand aside or answer any questions you may have about this process.
Jim? Sarah, a question for you before we move on anything else. I don't think in the 10 years I've been up here that we have done an apartment in that timeframe, at least I can't remember. So, I noticed that the tax abatement calculation is based on residents brought to the city, where I'm used to seeing it come from an industrial revenue bond, where it's based on jobs brought to the city. Is that consistent with what we've done in the past? Is that allowed within our guidelines? And I don't know if that's.
I do know that we attempted one apartment project in the past, but I too, Jim, am not aware of any apartment projects that we've done in Park City. We've done them in other locations, and industrial revenue bonds don't have to be industrial. They honestly could be for any commercial project, except you could not give a property tax exemption on retail business. So, I believe that the way the cost-benefit was run would accurately reflect the benefit to the city of that. Those are all based on complete assumptions, and, you know, the only guarantee I can give you is it will never be exactly as it's shown on that cost-benefit.
Well, exactly. It's our best, it's an educated guess.
Sir, if I may, not within the past 10 years, but the one apartment complex that we have at Hydraulic and 45th, that was more than 10 years ago, received the same type of abatement. The ones at 45th and Hydraulic Country Park.
Yes, I apologize.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. I just wanted to be sure we were consistent. I have a couple more questions, but I'll wait and see what others think.
Thank you. Charles?
The abatement, it was figured at 100% for 10 years, is what they came up with the cost ratio on, the numbers they based it on, but in our, on our papers, it shows a 100, 100, 100, four hundreds, and then at 90, 80, 70, 60.
It's figured at 75%?
Overall.
Overall?
If I can go back a couple years ago, when a developer came before the council and was talking about industrial revenue bonds, similar for an apartment-type venture, at the time, the council was pretty clear in its direction going forward that for an apartment complex, they did not foresee 100% abatement in the future. At the time, one of the council members, the discussion was something along the lines that we'd be more interested or more willing to look at something along the lines of 75% as the maximum amount of abatement over a 10-year time period.
So, at this time, we're not actually making a decision on the percentage of abatement? We're just in tension.
I think it's prudent to go ahead and discuss that. It does not need to be decided in order to adopt this resolution, but the sooner the developers are able to work with you on that percentage, better off they are in understanding the costs that they will incur.
Okay.
So, this one was worked out as 75%, and then they spread it out however they want. And so, obviously, your first three years of occupancy in a business or apartments.
Okay, so we're already in agreement with them at the 75%.
Not necessarily, that's just the numbers we figured out.
That's what we're looking at, yeah.
Based on the past conversation with council.
All right.
I don't, yeah, I don't see us going higher than that based on our previous agreements and conversations that we've had here as a council.
Yeah, I think it's important that we stay rather consistent, because I think there's going to be a lot more building coming in the near future that'll be asking for the same thing.
And the thing is, you gotta remember, like, in a lot of your, I'll say, commercial but industrial, these areas that we provide jobs, as Jim mentioned, there's less city municipal services that are provided, so the impact of the 100% abatement is, I guess, more consistent than what would you do in apartments where you're going to do, you're going to probably do some snow removal in there, in and around it. Police calls there is going to be probably significant where you have several hundred people living, some things like that, that we're still, we're going to be providing services. So, to me, 75 would be the top end that I feel like that we should look at as we're looking out for the interest of the city and managing tax dollars efficiently.
So, with your direction, I will prepare an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, and you can discuss that percentage, understanding 75% is the maximum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, would it be appropriate just to hear a little bit about the project?
Yeah.
From the developer?
Come on.
Hello, I'm Mike Brand. I'm one of the partners in the deal. I'm going to bring up Brandon.
I'm gonna bring up Brandon Wilson is another partner with me in the deal. So if we have any questions between the two, hopefully we can answer issues. Just to kind of follow up on, you guys were just discussing. So I am asking for the IRBs for two phases of property. We're gonna build 120 doors in the first phase, and the second buildings are to the west that are not highlighted in black is a future deal. Things go well in the first phase, and they're leased up good, and then we will start the other two buildings, and that's actually 48 doors. So I want to make sure that the IRB is for the whole project, just not for the first phase.
How many doors in the first phase?
116.
118, actually, 118 in the first phase.
And then the second phase was how many?
48.
Thank you.
Just to get a little bit of history, before we get started into the apartment deal, we have not selected a contractor yet. We have it out to bid. The plans are 100% done. We've gave the plans to the city. Sheldon, Stan Sheldon, did the drawings for us. Again, his office, Vanessa did the work, did a great job. We're hoping to select a contractor sometime middle to late part of next week. We've got three great contractors, Conco's Bennett, Commerce Construction, and Excel. They're the three bidders Bennett, so we will select one of them three. And the drawings took a little bit longer than we thought, so we hope we have, I was hoping to have a contractor selected by tonight, but didn't happen yet, so I'm giving a little bit more time. I'm open for discussion if you have any questions for Brandon and I.
You wanna go through the slides?
Sure. So the building, do you have like an arrow or something?
No, sir.
Okay. So the first building, let's say, at the top of the screen is gonna be the north, right there, that's gonna be, our clubhouse is gonna be built into the deal. So you can see right at the back of the door is the pool part of it. So the very west half of that is gonna be the clubhouse, it'll be on the lower level. We're gonna raise that first floor to 10 feet, just so we get a little more ceiling height than the clubhouse, and that'll be all the way on the first floor, and then the top two floors will be standard nine feet, just in that building. The other three buildings will all be the same, nine-foot ceilings, internal hallways, pool out the back. Right to the right of that is gonna put some cornhole games right there, and then over there, we're gonna put a pickleball court in there. So we're gonna have three really nice amenities. Inside the clubhouse itself, we've got a big clubhouse, workout room, we're gonna put a little dog wash in there because everybody has a pet these days. Am I forgetting anything, Brandon?
Dog park. The dog park, yeah.
Yeah, the southern part of the green area there is gonna be a dog park, and we're gonna fence that for people to go out there, and we're gonna have lots of grassy area, so... But if somebody wants to take their dog and just let it run wild, we'll have a fence around that they can deal. Then we have carports that Sean's back and forth on. So we have a big carport there, we have one on the very east side of the property, and then we have one in the north. And the ones that are shaded in the, kind of a darker deal, right south of, yeah, right there. So we're gonna put carports there. People love to park their car in the carports, the dark shaded ones will be the carports.
And garages.
Yeah, and then we'll have the garages. So we have a carport on the west side of the building, half of that will be carports, and the rest will be open parking. We're still gonna put in first phase. We're gonna put all the paving in, parking, we're gonna have it already, we're gonna have the sewer, the water already stepped over for the two buildings, so I'm hoping that we're gonna build them, but I'm getting it ready for, if in case we, things go well for us, like we're thinking it's gonna go, we'll build a building, the next two buildings in a lot quicker timeframe, just because of the... So this is the clubhouse building, you'll be, this is the face in the north side of the building, this will be face at the back of the library, basically. So the right-hand side of the building is gonna be the clubhouse on the lower level, and we'll have an office building there, the post office will be in there, we have an indoor post office, we got a, like a community center that's gonna have a little kitchen in it, place where people can come over and have birthday parties, whatever, have a workout room in there, and have a storefront on the front and the back where it's pretty visible. We got a little cover deck on the right-hand side of it, and then the top four will be apartments over there, and the rest will be apartments in that building. There are gonna be 22 doors in that building with the clubhouse. The other buildings that are shrouded in the pool area are all gonna have 24 doors in it. So we got a pool out there, gonna put that white fence around it to code. Obviously, you can see our pickleball, or excuse me, cornhole deals right there. And then on, basically, you can't see right now, there you go, we'll have a pickleball courts will be on this side of it yet. You can kind of see in the back of that. So, yeah, try to get some amenities for people to come out and hang out, figure out who their neighbors are, and try to make it as community possible as we possibly can, just to...
Great. Any other questions from council?
I think I'm, am I still buzzed in?
You are.
Okay. I just, yeah, Park City needs apartments, and I like it and I appreciate it, and they look really nice. You know, I'm okay with some incentive, like we've talked about, to help get it going. One comment I have is we spent quite a bit of time on a look and a feel for this neighborhood, and, you know, it's coming out of the ground, and these are, these are nice looking. One thing I thought of is, can they be some brick or some stone added? I know that changes. We're given a pretty good incentive here if that helps you be able to, I'm not saying dress them up, but, you know, just make sure that, and that's a zoning, planning and zoning board question, but just make sure we're consistent with the look of and feel of this new development.
We do have a little brick around the clubhouse part, you can see that all the way around the bay end of the deal. We chose not to put it on the building just because of the cost of things, and we want to make it affordable for people to live in Park City, you know?
Is it market rent type, market rent type rents?
You can't get in the market where you can't rent the units, you know, because people can only afford so much. And so I'm in the apartment world now, so I kind of know exactly where I need to be to lease them up. And so that's kind of the reason why we chose Dale. And we, hey, we shopped over the country. There's, all the thing that's building in Northern Arkansas, Missouri now, they're not putting one brick on it, so this is the new look, and we're changing up the siding, another one has some lap siding, vertical siding, and so it's a good look. We physically actually seen these buildings, so we know where we're getting our sale.
Okay. Jim?
Yeah, you were talking about your cost. Do you have an idea what it's gonna cost rent-wise a month for some of these apartments? Is it single-family, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
So we're gonna have one, two, three bedrooms.
Okay, what is your, what are you looking at as far as rent per month?
So...
One-bedroom?
On a one-bedroom. So my plan is currently, so it's just like, that's a great question, thank you. It's like when you go to a hotel, the first people to get there get best, and that rate's gonna be in that 960 range. So obviously, I'm hoping to get to like around $1,020 to $1,030 for a one-bedroom. On a two-bedroom, we're gonna be in that 1350 to 1380 range. So first come will be, but as we lease them up, you know, the price will have to jump up, because we have to get to a point where we have to make money to get to break even down, so we kind of know where our break even is over the first couple of years.
We have a lot of folks in Park City that are on fixed incomes. Now, are you gonna be working with HUD or Section 8 and helping those folks?
No, Section 8.
You're not gonna be working with them?
No.
Okay, so it's based solely on, is not, not based on income is what you say the amount's gonna be?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
I would ask Sean on, one question that kind of tails off of what Jim was asking. In the neighborhood of Park Center, we've required some building specs and some things that they're required to have, and my question would be, does this complex meet the same requirements as the buildings and housing around it?
I'm gonna kick that over to Russ, because he's the one who developed the downtown district with higher standards, so to speak, for the downtown district.
So I'll start, I'll ask again. So Jim was asking a question about these renderings, the amount of masonry and stone and brick and stuff on it. And I know in the Park Center area, we've made requirements that they all are required to have a certain percentage or whatever of stone facing. And I'm just curious, is this meeting what we're required?
This is my actual first time seeing these drawings, so I had just made a note in my phone tomorrow to talk to Vanessa at Sheldon Architecture to get me these plans, and I'll make that review and get with the applicant, but this will be scheduled presumably in our April, I believe, April 21st Planning Commission meeting for site plan review, and then you will see it in your, at your first May meeting for final authorization. So premature for me to make a comment. I would think in general terms, this would meet the spirit and intent of the downtown district, where I don't believe we've prescribed actual percentages like we did with the non-residential development standards that apply to commercial and industrial projects across the city.
Okay. I mean, I think they look great, don't get me wrong, but I'm just wondering, especially for that exterior facing the streets, where we've required housing, I want to make sure that...
I'll be able to provide Sean better information tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you. All right, very good. Good discussion, have no other lights lit up. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay.
I'm gonna, thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate your time.
And if you want, you can maybe stay up there, because I'm gonna open a public hearing if anybody wants to come up and talk. I will open the public hearing at 7:57. If there's anybody present tonight that wants to speak on this matter, you're welcome to come up now. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anybody present tonight that would like to come up and speak on this matter. Seeing none, I will close the hearing at 7:57. You're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, I would entertain counsel action. Jim?
I would then move to approve Resolution 1248-2025.
Okay. And Troy?
I'll second.
All right. We've had a good discussion on this, is there any further? Charles?
The resolution, I'm assuming it does include the IRBs for the first 118 doors and the second 48 doors? Is that in the original resolution?
It is.
Okay.
And it's 75%?
Not to exceed.
Yeah.
So not to exceed. Okay. Does the motion, and I second agree with what the last comments?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Lynda, did you have a question?
I, yeah, I do. On the, the slide that had the placement of it, is it right, there's like 10 houses that will back up to it, is that correct? Like, I know they didn't take the whole plot of land there, will there be houses that back up to it?
That is correct. On the east side of the property, there's Hebert Street, you can see that, and then there's patio homes on both the east and the west side of Hebert Street. So these will back up to the patio homes.
And I'm guessing maybe your next question would be screening between the apartments and the houses?
Yeah, like what kind of barrier would there be potentially between them?
So when this goes to planning and zoning, they're probably gonna...
They'll take care of...
Require that, but he may have a comment.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the reason why, that's a great question you asked, by the way, that's the reason why I put the garages where we did, so it'll be a little bit of a buffer between the residential people in our apartment complex. If you can see on the east side, it'll kind of hide them houses, and then the south side, where they're building their current buildings, we have that block with a garage all the way along there.
Can you move to the slide that showed like the count of the land? Right there. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, have no more lights lit up? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Move to item three, discuss and consider approval of the vacation of a 30-foot sanitary sewer easement within a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Kansas Coliseum Edition, located east of I-135 between 85th Street North and 77th Street North.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Russ Abey, subdivision administrator. This is the vacation of approximately 3/4 of a mile of unused sanitary sewer easement that was dedicated as part of the Kansas Coliseum Edition. The city has sewer mains running just to the, a couple hundred feet to the east of this. The landowner has petitioned the city to vacate this unused, unnecessary strip of easement. The Planning Commission on March 17th recommended approval of the vacation 601, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Russ. All right. Jim?
I didn't have any questions on this one, so I would move to approve the vacation as presented.
Terry?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Jim, second by Terry. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Russ. Next to item four, discuss and consider implementing REPT for enhanced city communication.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for your consideration this evening. We're requesting authorization for the mayor to sign a contract with REPT for a trial period from May 1, 2025, through July 31, 2025, essentially three months, with the ability to continue this as we move forward if we're satisfied with the services. It's $1,000 per month. So what is REPT? REPT is a web-based platform. It's designed to streamline communication between the city and our residents. It is, it has an AI search engine, and it also has the ability to incorporate video with it. It's a pretty slick system that is something that can be utilized across our city departments. So how the AI system works is that, for example, when we have someone that is asking the same question over and over again, they ask a question, the AI search engine will actually search our website to get the answer. We have a short video that I think would probably help if we go ahead and get that going. Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
What will happen then, if the AI search engine is going through our website, doesn't find an answer, then we have the ability to answer that question. Either we can do that in writing back to the individual, or what we can do is we can, we can put together a short video. The video is very easy to put together. It can be done on any laptop, and what's really slick about it is that, say, for example, we have someone that wants to know, how do I pay my water bill? So it, you want to go ahead and show that first, or? Okay. That way maybe...
You work hard for the people in your community. Despite your hard work, misinformation and social media twist the narrative of your team's progress. Existing communication methods are impersonal, filled with trolls, or simply don't reach everyone. And when residents aren't informed, they get angry and wonder if anything's being done. Without that trust, it's harder for you to work hard for them. It's time to humanize local government with REPT, the video messaging and engagement platform for municipalities. REPT empowers you to share short video updates with your community, answering resident questions, and setting the record straight on local matters. You can feature any staff member on REPT, so the answers come from whoever knows best. Plus, we make it easy to record and share. With a built-in teleprompter, you can record in one take and share in two clicks. With REPT, own the narrative and put misinformation to bed, so you can get back to serving your community. Schedule a demo today.
Okay. So for example, that question of how do I pay my water bill? So someone puts on there, how do I pay my water bill? The AI search engine is gonna search our website to see if there's an answer. If it doesn't come up with the answer, then we have the ability to put that answer back out to someone, either in writing, or we can have a video. So for example, using that, it's, it's, how do I pay my water bill? So Marlo then takes out the laptop, and she can put together what her answer is, and she has a teleprompter, so as she's standing there talking, which I'd like to have a teleprompter right now, she's standing there and she's talking, and you just read it. So the person that's on the other end doesn't see you reading that, but you're reading the answer. So the great thing about that then is we can take that video, we can embed it back into our website, and so someone asks that question again and again, they get that same answer again and again. So you've got that consistent message that is going out to all of our residents of how do I pay my water bill? The other thing is, is that it's, it's pretty slick too, in the respect that, say, AI has, they, they search our website. We have the ability, before it goes back out to the person, we're gonna look to see, is that really the answer we want the resident to get? So it may... So it may search our website, and it's gonna find something that's outdated, or it's really not the answer that we want it to have. So then, it's kind of like a safeguard. We can go back in again, and we can change what's on the backside of our website. We also can use that video, and we can take that video, and we can push it out on our social media as well. So it can be used across all city departments for lots of different answers. So for example, we have a construction project. People are asking us lots of questions. We put together a video, and that video could be maybe someone from Public Works Department that's actually standing out there on site, say, our new senior center, here's where we're at on our new senior center, here's where we're at on this road project. We can take that video, it's on our website, people are asking the question, we push it out on Facebook. So it's, it's our ability to engage our, our residents and keep that communication going back and forth. It can be used for council members. Say there's an agenda item that's coming up, you want to say, hey, please come speak to us on this agenda item. It's just an ability for us to communicate back and forth. And of course, we want to manage what that message looks like, so it may be appropriate for us to have a laptop here, and then we have a screen behind that looks very professional, the image that we want to create, or maybe we want to go out in, in a park, that we have something that's coming up, an event, hey, come out to our, our Easter egg hunt, come out this, this, on the nineteenth, we're gonna have where it's brushing limb day. Here's where you're gonna come for brushing limb day. If you wanted to know where to come, here's the hours. It's our ability to really increase that communication with our residents in a format that is more understandable. And can I answer any questions?
Charles.
Okay, the way I understand this is if, let's say, Marlo answers a question, she does it on her laptop, it's gonna actually be her face talking into the screen, okay? If the AI finds the answer on our website and gives the person the answer off the website, will that be, will that be a cartoon character, or will that be a person too?
No, but if it's me, it might look like a cartoon character, but no. It would be an answer that would go back out, because we can answer both, here, here's your, it's words that they're gonna see.
Written format.
No, they're not gonna, it, it's not going to take it and turn it into a video. It's not gonna, it's only gonna be a video answer if we put together that, that answer.
Okay, will it be, I mean, will it be something they read, or will it be an audio feed?
It'll be in a written format.
In written format.
In that particular case where she said, hey, how do I pay my water bill? You go to our website, and there's a very logical, straightforward step process for paying your water bill. If AI finds it on the website, it'll compose that, that says, here's the way you do you pay your water bill. That's simple. What she's talking about, the video capability, is something that you're not normally gonna find on the website. What's currently going on with the Grove Street Rehab? You know, we may not have that on our website, so that's where you may want to create a video. The nice thing about it, like she said, you can share it with Public Works. We could send it to you in an email as a council member, and say, hey, if you'd like to make an announcement about an upcoming council meeting, we could even type up, if you would prefer, the actual words or statements to say, that'll appear in the teleprompter. You don't even need to download the software to your computer, you can just open up the email, and as long as you have a camera-capable laptop or home video, or a home computer, you could film it right there from the comfort of your own home. So it's very portable and allows to go across the spectrum.
Yeah, the, to be this, it sounds incredible, and the more, the more things that we can answer with an actual person doing the talking, the better, you know?
We have looked at a couple other cities that have already signed up for this service and are currently using it. The closest one that I would probably point to is, if you go to the website for the city of Emporia, they just started this two or three months ago. Trey Hocking is, or Cocking is the city manager. And just his video, it comes across as very professional, because he's just reading a teleprompter, rather than looking off to the side and worrying about how it's filmed. It's all written there, and it's, it's designed to be short forty-five second videos, no longer, no less, you know, somewhere around there, just to get the word out, so that way, we're trying to avoid all those questions. How many times does somebody ask, how do I rent the seniors, or how do I rent the community building? How do I pay my water bill? So this is really for the employees in the front office, really gonna help them on all those questions that they answer a million times every month that come up time and time again. Hopefully, this will expedite that.
I think it's impressive. Does this work with social media stuff?
Yes.
Because one of the things I get frustrated with is I see a lot on like Facebook and on our pages, that people ask questions, and I don't see them get answered for, sometimes never, but will, will this AI respond to questions that get asked? Like, we have a posted position right now that says we're hiring a new receptionist. Some people says, is this full-time or part-time? We know that a lot of people read the, read the post, it says that, but will this thing have the ability to respond to their question?
Only if they ask it in the app. It is not going to take over those questions that we have, like through Facebook Messenger or on Facebook.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Lynda.
Okay, you said only if they ask in the app, or ask in the website?
In, in the app. They have to ask it through the app, and I think on the website, you're able to do it as well, but it's, what, what it will not do is what, what the mayor, the question that he asked is, we have incorporated in our Facebook, we have a Facebook post, and then we have all of these questions that are underneath that, which we do not answer, we may answer something individually, we do not answer on Facebook itself. But this will not go into our Facebook. We can post a video, a forty-five second video that we, that we make, we can post that onto our social media.
Right.
But it will not go in there and then answer that question. And then the thing that is important, that we think as well, is that the safeguard that it has, is when someone asks these questions, it allows us to go in and make sure before that answer goes back out, we will have someone that's assigned to make sure we're reading that, to make sure that we're getting the answer out correctly.
Okay, so this isn't someone on the website asking, how do I pay my bill? This is a separate app.
Well, actually, it is. Matt, Matt, can you tune me back over to the laptop, please? Just to give you a good example, so here is the normal Civic Plus website for Emporia, Kansas, that I know they are up and running, so this would be, right here, you see Ask Emporia. So you click on that, and it's gonna say, okay, we're gonna take you to a different site. But then it comes up here, and just as I explained, here's Trey.
Good morning. I wanted to take a minute and tell you about a new tool that we're using here at the city of Emporia. It's called Ask Emporia. This is your chance to ask us questions that you have on your mind, and we'll get you an answer, either in writing or in a video like this one, where we can show you what's going on. So now it's on you. Send us those questions that you have on your mind, and we will do our best to get them answered.
Okay.
So you can either do that, or right above, it has suggested videos, but here is your AI-powered questions and answers, so I can say
How do I pay my water bill?
How do I pay my water bill? I can type. Come on.
And while I was doing it, that video that you just saw of Trey, we could also take that video, and we could put it onto our Facebook, which will direct people back over to be able to know how to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that they started on the website, it wasn't just an app they had to download or something.
No, it's strictly
They start there, and the app is integrated.
They can go to our website and click on that link, and it will take them to this, and then it took AI just a second, but here it is, according to their website, online payment, in-person payment, mail payment, phone payments.
And the one thing, when you saw the video too, I don't know if you recognized, but underneath it, the words were coming up, and those were not the words he put on the teleprompter to say, those were the words he actually says, and so if someone is hearing impaired, they're gonna be able to see the answer come across that. That's the ADA capabilities.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, if there's not enough, if you didn't get an answer to your question, then you can select a category of, okay, I want to learn more about budget, city parks, or something along that line, and say, this is what I'd like to know more information about. We can go in there and look at it and say, well, yeah, that's something that's not gonna be resident on our website, let's go ahead and create a video for it real quick.
We do have a staff member that would be assigned to manage this.
Yes, sir.
Do we track, will we track use the, how much is used? Like, how many times do people send in questions, and how much does this thing respond? I just want to make sure that, especially over the trial period, I just want to make sure it's something that, obviously, it's gonna be low at first, because as people are learning, we have it, but. George Glover.
Yeah, Dan, I saw on the Facebook page, there was somebody who was on the, the job they were inquiring about, you guys were just talking about whether or not you had to be a citizen, or could be a citizen or not of Park City to apply for. Did you see that? And I was wanting to know, maybe the AI person could respond to that, because I didn't see a response underneath what she had asked.
So that's what I was talking about, like, on the job, people post questions on Facebook, and they don't get answered, and that's what I was saying, but this does not respond to that, is what she was saying, it does not.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody posted on Facebook that they heard, keywords, that you had to live in Park City to work for the city.
Okay.
No, that's not right, but. Okay, very good. That answer question, George?
Yeah.
Okay. Charles.
Is, do you anticipate an extended learning curve as far as trying to get the people to be aware of this, and, and accept using it, and understand how to use it? How are we gonna do that? Is there a plan for that, or?
As far as educating the community?
Yeah, getting the word out there, basically.
Outreach, that is something that we would have to do through our social media, and if we chose to, we could use community signs and some things such as that.
I think it would be really good to use council members too, that we could each grab a piece of it and record videos or whatever, just to, for the engagement aspect of it, would be fantastic.
The, the push would be to get people to get onto our website to ask questions, and that's really pushing people to the website, because the, the button that would be on our website is pretty simplistic to use.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So like, yeah, how do I pay a ticket, or? Can I drive my UTV on the streets? I mean, things like that, that AI would generate an answer to it, where it would give all the rules, the regulations. Okay. Very good, any other questions? Okay. So is this, feel like it's something we want to try, or entertain some direction from council on this? As you see, it's about a thousand dollars, it is a thousand dollars a month. Brandy.
So the trial period ends July, and then we can decide we want it, we don't want it, and it's a thousand dollar a month, we can cancel it after thirty days' notice. That's, so it'd be pretty easy to cancel if we decide we didn't like it, okay?
Brandy, hang on just a second, I just want to ask one question, and you can cancel even beyond that too, right? With thirty days' notice?
That's correct.
That is correct.
So really, the trial period is negated by a thirty-day notice?
And, and the representative that, that did this, he had spent ten years with Twitter before developing this company with a couple other people. That's one of the things that he said, I, I don't want to go into a full-year-long contract straight from the get-go. I want every city to try it for three months to make certain that they're utilizing it, that they see the value in it, and then go beyond that point, so.
And the reason I say that, it was a good question, but I, I just, I'm not sure that you're gonna have a good measurement in ninety days to get people engaged. I feel like it's gonna take a little longer than that for people to realize what a tool it is, so, okay.
Yeah, and that's what I was just trying to get at, was that we can cancel it anytime after thirty days, we're not stuck into a year contract at a thousand dollars a month. We could cancel in six months if we decide we didn't like it or something. Okay. With that, I'll move to approve and authorize mayor to sign a contract with REPT for a trial period from May first, twenty twenty-five, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, at a cost of a thousand per month. Following accessible trial period, the service will continue on a rolling monthly basis for a thousand dollars per month, with the option to cancel at any time with thirty days' notice, to be paid for by the general fund governing body.
Thank you, Brandy. Jim.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Brandy, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onto item five. Consider sample ordinance regulating the use and operation of golf carts and special purposes, purpose vehicles in the city. So I just, I guess just to start this off, this is a discussion item only, and the ordinance that was sent out is certainly not a finished product, we just wanted to get the temperature of council and get some direction on how, how do we want to go to fit, to build an ordinance that fits our community?
Mayor, I've got a list here, just a few highlights, not that you all haven't read it and digested it a hundred percent, but this is a fairly comprehensive model ordinance.
Your mic is not on.
Not on?
I don't think so.
Got the green light? Oh, okay. Like I said, it's fairly comprehensive, but you don't have to adopt something this comprehensive, you can cut it back, you can, actually, after looking at it, you could decide you don't want golf carts or special purpose vehicles too. I mean, everything's on the table, but this is a, this is a starting point, and, and let me distill it a little bit, so that you kind of know the things that you might want to focus on to either leave in or take out. Number one, the, the, these vehicles would be limited in our city to streets that are, have speed limits of twenty-five miles per hour or less. It would only, they would only be legal to be operated on the streets during daylight hours, sunrise, sunset. You would have to have a driver's license and be age eighteen or greater. They are prohibited on sidewalks. That's something that I'll mention again when I'm done with this, this list. If you wish to have them on sidewalks, we probably need to define what a sidewalk is.
Yes.
The state of Kansas, in interpreting the state law about these vehicles, defines sidewalks pretty narrow, no, no pun intended, narrowly, meaning only those paved areas between property lines and curbs. So the usual thinking of sidewalks, not, not applying to bike paths, walking paths, paths in park, that sort of thing. These vehicles would have to have a mirror to see in the rear, at least one. They would have to have that triangular, slow-moving vehicle signed on the back of the vehicle. They would have to have safety belts to the extent that that's required under the standard traffic ordinance, and I believe that would really mean the people in the front seat, the driver and the passenger. They have to be insured to the minimum requirements of state law. And finally, they would be registered with us, so there would be a little sticker, not, not necessarily a license, but a sticker that would cost twenty-five dollars one, one time, is that correct? Unless it's lost and replaced, it costs twenty-five to replace it, but that's kind of a distillation of the, the highlights, or, or the real requirements that are, that appear in this ordinance. So at, at this point, you can discuss it, ask questions of the chief or me, and be glad to answer.
You started out, tell me what, what were the first three you said?
Well, it's, they're only allowed on streets in the city that are twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limits or less.
Yeah.
They're only allowed in daylight hours, sunrise to sunset, and they, the operation of the vehicles require a driver's license and a person eighteen years or older, so sixteen-year-olds with learner's permits or those sorts of license, licenses would not be able to drive them in the city.
Thank you. Brandy.
Okay, I have a lot. So I'll just start with your list and try to hopefully mark it off of what I have in here. So first, you're twenty-five miles or less. That makes sense, but let's think about the people that live over where TJ's area is, was it Ironstone, Iron? So the only, they have no direct path to, say, to get to Quick Trip or over to the park, so the only way that they can get there is they would have to go down Sixty-Ninth Street, which is forty miles an hour, to get to an entrance, or they'd have to go uphillside, which is forty-five miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour, I think that's what it is, to get to Cambridge Valley, to get into that residential area, because we're saying, you can't go over there on the sidewalks, because the other area would be back there, back along the sidewalk. So how does that, how would that affect, how would those people be able to get, so that way they could drive it?
They can't.
That's a problem. If you paid any attention to Uh, if you paid any attention to what Wichita did, uh, it was a hot mess. I mean, they, they adopted it, then they changed their mind. They went out and to their, uh, district advisory boards and got people yelling and screaming. People lived on golf courses, which, I guess, we don't have that issue, but there were people on golf that belonged to golf courses that lived just off the golf course that couldn't, based upon the first, uh, iteration of what Wichita did, couldn't drive their golf carts to their golf course from their house because the, there was a speed limit that was, like you said, greater than, I think, thirty was what Wichita had. The answer is that some people won't be able to drive it where they want to.
Right, and so I, I feel like that, that's an issue.
The other side of that is, do we want to put these on forty mile-an-hour streets?
No, and I get that, but then, but we've got in here that they can, they can essentially cross. So, they could cross Hillside, they could cross Hydralic, or they could cross Sixty-first Street to get to the next little area. So, it's just, do we, could we put something in there that allows them to maybe go up those till they get to that first point of entrance to, where they could get into the twenty-five miles an hour or less?
That's.
Speed zone.
Totally up to you.
So, that, I mean, and these are just, I'm just throwing out there for, just to think about items. Okay. Um, daylight hours. So, that kind of goes with the issue with, um, when we talk about the one rearview mirror. So, what about side mirrors? Um, shouldn't they have side mirrors on them? Um, turn, turn signals, don't most of these vehicles have turn signals? Okay, or headlights or brake lights?
Those are questions beyond me. This doesn't require it. This requires a mirror that allows you to see in the rear. It could be, you know, it could be here, it could be here, it could be there, as long as it allows the driver of the vehicle to see to the rear. It doesn't specify that it has to be, you know, on a golf cart. I'm trying to think.
Because looking at all these pictures.
Where you have it in your car is the best place, but.
Well, and I, and I guess, back, so back to the daylight hours. So, looking at most of these pictures, do most of these i- items have headlights or brake lights? So, therefore, they could potentially drive in the evening? I mean, I'm just, just throwing out thoughts.
Well, most golf carts that, that I'm aware of, uh, don't have either.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
And they can have them, uh, and UTVs, there's pictures behind you.
Yeah, and I, well, these golf carts have lights on them, so that's why I'm like, I, I don't know. And then, um, and then in the requirements, like I said, with the rearview mirror, but we're saying that, um, safety belts need to be in there, but we, in the sample one, it didn't list safety belts as being a, a requirement, so I think.
Yes, it does. Yeah.
Under the, under item four C, all specials should be equipped with at least one rearview mirror and slow-moving vehicle emblem. So, that's the only area that it really talks about, any type of requirements.
Well, under, uh, on the second page, under valid driver's license, penalty duties, and responsibilities, it says, subsection B, every driver and occupant of a special purpose vehicle shall be subject to the provisions of the current edition of the standard traffic ordinance with regards to requirements for wearing safety belts.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. We, we listed safety belts there, but over, under requirements of what, how, what should be in the vehicle, we don't list it as saying s- safety belts. I'm just.
That's a worksheet, right?
Uh, where, where are you saying we don't?
Under four C, and I know this is just a worksheet, but I'm just saying, let's make, if we're going to add it as a require, if we're going to talk about ha- wearing seat belts over here, then we should have it as under a required item on the front page, the last.
Uh, sure. If that's a better pla- that may be a better place for it, put seat belts under four C.
And then, um, we talk about prohibited on sidewalks, and so, and I know you brought up, maybe we need to define what sidewalks are, but how are we going to enforce that? Because right now, we have signs over there in the new sidewalk area that's over by, um, behind High Ridge and, and going over to Hillside that says no motor vehicles allowed. There's motor vehicles driving that all the time, and I never see anything being done. So, how is this going to be enforced?
Well, if they see them, they would enforce it.
But if they're back there on those sidewalks, they're not going to see them.
Right, but that's not something that this is going to cover. That's something that's already in effect. This is just covering operation of vehicles on streets.
Well, I know, but we say in here it's prohibit on sidewalks. So, I'm just, I'm just asking, how are we going to enforce that? If we're going to say it's prohibited, how are we going to make sure that that's enforced?
If someone's, someone can call them in, or if somebody sees them. I think this would be if someone's driving on the street, and then, like you were just saying a while ago, well, I can't get to Quick Trip, so I'm going to drive the sidewalk.
Right.
That's where this would fall in.
I mean, is the, if the question is, are people, is it possible that we could have this ordinance and people were driving the sidewalk and there'd be no?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sure that's going to happen. I'm just saying, how's it, how's it?
But, but it, but if your question is, would you prefer to have them on sidewalks?
No.
Okay, okay, then.
I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing out things to think about. I mean, I mean, you know, we have the signs up and, and, I mean, kids are, kids are driving those sidewalks all the time with their dirt bikes or their go-karts or, or their, um, four-wheelers.
E-bikes.
So, I mean, I'm just, so, just things to think about.
Call them in, it's illegal.
And then, um, insured. So, do most peop- and I don't know a lot about these, so these are truly just questions. Do most people insure these? So, we're saying we're requiring insurance on the, on these vehicles. Do most people insure these?
I, I have no idea.
It's a question.
I don't own one, and, I mean, it, I would think.
Yeah. That, that's why I'm saying, it, because.
If you, if you, I think they cost enough money that I would think most people that had homeowner's insurance would want to insure the vehicle itself against being stolen or, or damaged. And, and once the insurance company knows that you, that, that's what you're insuring, then I suspect that they are going to require, that they're going to either require or offer some liability coverage in addition to property. But I don't know the answer to that for sure.
I, I guess I would say this, maybe people do, or maybe people don't. I think if you're driving, you know, at eighty-one speedway or Jeeps, and you're riding off-road somewhere, probably not going to be covered. But to me, if you're riding it on the streets and you could run into anybody, even a pedestrian, I think it needs to be insured. If you don't want to ride it on the streets, you don't need insurance. But if you're going to drive it on the streets.
I can tell you that, knowing that insurance companies like to make money, I, I'm almost a hundred percent sure that if you went to your insurance carrier and said, can you insure this?
Well, I'm sure, yes, they're going to say, let's insure it.
So, we're requiring it because they're on the street, as the mayor said, and so we're going to require insurance. I guess if we adopted this with the insurance requirement and somebody came back, or enough people came back and said, we can't insure it, it's impossible, it can't be done, then we would have the ability to remove it.
No, and I'm, I'm not saying that it can't be done. I'm just saying, do people really carry insurance on these? So, is that?
Well, if they want to drive on our streets, that, I, I mean, I, you could decide you didn't want to do that, but I think I would advise you to require them to be insured.
Insurance is available, and it's not horribly expensive.
No, it's not. We, we would require liability insurance.
Okay.
It needs to be comprehensive, but it has to be liability insurance.
Okay, and then my next item is registering it for a twenty-five-dollar fee one time. So, what? What really is the purpose of the registering, registering of that? Is that necessary, and is that going to take more work and more manpower than what we're charging a twenty-five-dollar fee one time for?
Uh, I think it's a good question, and obviously, it's not, from my perspective, it's not a revenue thing for the city because it's a relatively small amount of money and it's a one-time charge. I see it as primarily a couple of things. One of them is, it gives us the opportunity to look at what kind of vehicle do they have? Because as you can see, there are basically five different unconventional vehicles, if you will, and sometimes people mistake one for the other. So, if the city chooses to not legalize the operation of some of those vehicles, it would give us the opportunity to say, okay, this is the one you're wanting to register, but this is not legal to be registered. Uh, secondly, it's an educational thing for us. It gives us the opportunity to present them with a brochure that has these regulations in it, so that we can tell people upfront, hey, you know, these are the rules. If you want to drive this vehicle in Park City on a public street, then these are the things that you need to do. So, I see that as the two main reasons to require registration.
Okay.
Also, the insurance. If, if that was required, we would have an opportunity to check that when they register. That would just be a one-time.
When they do that, do they have to give any demographic information or anything about the vehicle?
It's.
It says serial number, make, model, serial number in here.
Just a serial number.
Yeah.
So, then, I guess that this is one more thing, and I even hate to say, ask this. So, these essentially are open records then, right? So, some of these people don't go and report these with the appraiser. So, now, we've got a list of, of these, these ATVs, these golf carts, that now, is the appraiser going to get a hold of the list? And now, they're on the tax roll. And like I said, I hate, I hate to be the one that asks that question.
Okay. I, I mean, what, why, why do we care? Uh, I mean, if somebody, if, if you, I don't know enough about taxation of personal property, but if it's like a vehicle, and I own vehicles, I have to tag them so that they know, they know about me because I have to get them licensed. And if what you're saying is that this is something that, under state law, ought to be appraised and, and assessed a per- personal property tax, then that seems like that's the right thing to do. I don't see that we're doing anything with our registration that frustrates that, and if it enhances the ability of the appraiser to do it, then maybe we're doing good government work. So, I, I, I don't know how else to answer your question.
Okay. Okay. I just know a lot of them are not on the tax roll right now. That's why I asked that question. Okay. Uh, I, I have more, but I'm sure, but I'll stop for now.
George Glover.
Yeah, Brandy, my, my vehicle is on the tax roll, just so you know. Taxes.
You don't have a golf cart, though.
No, it's, it drives like one.
Personal vehicle.
I did read the survey that was sent out to some of the folks that responded and some of their remarks. I did see that. For me, it's always about the safety of our families and our kiddos that are walking on the streets. I do like the twenty-five mile-an-hour. I, I did read that. So, let me get this straight about what, what, when somebody gets a golf court, golf, a golf cart and brings it, do they have to come up to the city and get it registered? Does the chief do a vehicle inspection of that vehicle to make sure it meets our requirements? And, uh, do they have to list the people that are eighteen or over in the household that are going to be driving that? And what if somebody new comes into the household? Do they have to come up that day and tell us who they are and whether or not they're insured on the policy? See, there's a lot of things we have to look at in addition to what we're talking about.
I would say no, no, and no.
No, no, they would not have to bring the vehicle up. They would need to bring something to show, like a serial number or the make. No inspection of the golf cart to make sure it's in regulations with the city of Park City? No, we're not going to, at this, the way it's proposed right now. We're not a vehicle inspection facility, is what I'm saying. We can, we can go with just a serial number, maybe a picture of the. Right, just a general description of the vehicle, that make and model, and if it has a serial number. My thing is, if an eighteen-year-old comes into the home and he's not one of the ones that's registered with us, is not under.
We're not going to register drivers, George. And any, any person who is over the age of eighteen with a valid driver's license can operate the vehicle, as far as we're concerned.
Okay, so they don't have to let you guys know that they have insurance? They're under an insurance policy?
That's between them and their insurance company. If they let some.
That's an issue, though. I'm just letting you know. That could be an issue.
It's an issue for the owner, but it's n- not an issue.
Getting an accident liability as well.
Again, that's why we have insurance. That's why we require them to have insurance. That's between them and the insurer.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I'm sorry, I cleared out the buttons here. If you guys were on, you're going to have to.
I was in.
Linda.
I have a few also, like Brandy. When I look at the vehicles that are shown, I think we're missing a big class of vehicles that are considered side-by-sides. And full disclosure, I own side-by-sides. I'm a proponent of this, if my side-by-side is included. I don't have a golf cart or anything like that. Are we limited to these? Can we add these four-seater side-by-sides that hold my family around at the Fourth of July parade and all of that here in town?
I think you'd be considered the UTV.
I'm concerned, just because they're not pictured, it doesn't look like it, these, and UTVs are considered utility terrain vehicles, like where they're doing work. And so, I want to make sure that it's, it's clearly defined, that those are included in this.
These all have a specific definition under state law. And that, what you're describing as a side-by-side would fall under the UTV, or, or what's actually under state law, it's called a worksite utility vehicle.
Okay, and that's what I want to make sure of.
Yes.
To Brandy's point, I know, like, we take ours, when we lived in Valley Center, we were able to register them with the city. We could drive them around town, uh, and that was one of the things we looked for when we moved to Park City. We realized we lost the ability to do that. Um, we did talk with the police officer when we moved. He said, don't let me catch you in the McDonald's parking lot, but feel free to drive it to your parents or whatever, you know, in residential streets. And so, we have at times done that. But to Brandy's point, how will people be able to, you know, get inside to the residential streets to do anything? And also, how can I get to a county road if I can't go to a road that's over twenty-five miles per hour to ride freely on those county roads like we do? Like, we'll trailer to a friend's house now to get there, but if I could leave my house and get to a county road legally, then that's what we would begin to do. I, I think Brandy's question of can we caveat a few locations and say, you know, north of Sixty-Ninth or north of Hydralic to get to Sixty-Ninth, you know, and maybe some of the Hillside regions or whatever? Is that a possibility, obviously adding some of those?
You, you can do whatever you want, yes.
Here's what I kind of wonder. I, I feel like, and I, I don't have any of, any of these, but I feel like a golf cart is different than a UTV in terms of how fast they go. And to me, I don't want a golf cart like on Hydralic in a fifty-five mile-an-hour zone, but I could see a UTV on Hydralic or on Hillside.
And, and that's my question. Like, we have, we have lights better than my car lights on our side-by-sides. We have turn signals, we have brake lights, um, everything that's required, we already have. And I think people in the community that ride probably already have that, too. And so, the twenty-five-dollar registration fee per year, or, you know, one time, great, but if I'm being honest, there's going to be people who are going to have insurance at the time that they register them with the city and say, great, we're done. And they're not going to keep it up because there's no incentive to. I feel like a yearly twenty-five-dollar fee is a small price to pay for someone like our family who likes to ride these and would take advantage of being able to do that in town more often. And I know it's not revenue generating, but it's definitely one of those side checks where we can make sure everybody's being legal and participating, and, and mine are on the tax rolls also, so I'm not worried about that. But it brings up a point that these types of vehicles are not always on the tax rolls because they're, um, they're just one of those small and conspicuous things.
Okay. Charles.
Couple of things. Number two, on the sunrise to sunset, I can see that as being, uh, very a good rule for a golf cart that doesn't have lights and turn signals and brake lights and taillights, et cetera. But like I say, a lot of them have the, have full instrumentation as far as lights. And I know there's, if you go to your neighbor's house at night or in the daytime and you don't leave till after dark, that you couldn't drive it home even though you have the correct lighting. Uh, I, I think if it, if one has the lights, I think they ought to be able to drive it, uh, within the rules after dark. Mirror, uh, absolutely. The sticker on the back, I don't know how important that is. It says, slow-moving vehicle, you know? Not, not real important. The age limitation of eighteen, I think, I'm not sure, but I think you can get a full driver's license at sixteen and a half in Wichita. You know, so you'd have a valid driver's license at sixteen and a half. And, uh, I know there's going to be a lot of situations where people under, you know, with restricted driver's licenses and things like that would like to drive them. But, you know, if you follow the same rules as the, uh, for a motor vehicle, you can, you can drive it at fourteen with an adult in there with you. It looks like that would be a reasonable law to just, uh, mirror image, basically, what the, what the rules are for, uh, an automobile. But, uh, eighteen, I think, is, is way too old because they already have a driver's license for a year and a half by then. And, uh, let's see what else. Uh, safety belts, that, that was a big question with me. A lot of, most golf carts do not have safety belts. And, uh, the, uh, UTVs and stuff that they're producing now, you know, they all do have safety belts, but they usually have a ability, like I say, to go a lot faster. But if you're talking about a, uh, normal golf cart can hit a speed of about twenty miles an hour if it's got good batteries. And, uh, most of them can't even do that fast, but, uh, I don't know if I would require safety belts in, in a normal golf cart, but, uh, someone would have to convince me one way or the other. Insurance, yeah, I, I had insurance on my golf cart. Insurance, yeah, I, I had insurance on my golf cart. And, uh, I think, and I didn't take it off the course. And I had liability insurance on the golf. You'd be surprised what you can run over in just in a, uh, playing around a golf, you know? So I, I think liability insurance is a good idea to have regardless of whether you're on a golf course or on a city street. But, uh, those are the, those are the things that, uh, uh, came to my mind.
I, I will say, I, I kinda battled back and forth on the age limit. And I just feel like there's a maturity issue on a sixteen-year-old just learn, if you look at these, there's less protection. For just for example, a golf cart, no seat belts, but you also have, these are wide-open UTVs. Where someone with not very much driving experience just pulls out in front of a, a fifty mile an hour pickup truck or something. I just think the, the, the experience that someone gets over a few more years of driving is pretty key. That, that was kinda what made me change my mind, but. Done?
Done.
Jim.
Okay, I'm in the, I'm in the category of owning one of these, so I spent quite a bit of time on it. I've driven them for years. But, um, I, I kinda like how your guidelines you had written up, Doug, or whoever wrote these. But, um, one comment I had was "slow-moving vehicle" sign. Throw, we don't need a slow-moving vehicle sign, but it needs lights, blinkers, you already said mirrors. I mean, a, a, a UTV comes with lights and blinkers, or I'm sorry, it comes with lights and taillights and a speedometer and safety belts. There's an add-on package for blinkers and a horn, which I put on mine right away just because I didn't feel safe on the road without it. You know, you can drive them in the country already. I, you just, no way you wanna share a road with a semi and not let them know that you're gonna turn in front of them when you're driving down a country road or a, or a, a highway. That was my thought is, and then I even looked on golf carts. Every picture I saw of a golf cart had headlights, I'm not sure about taillights. And I did look and saw that they had blinker horn, uh, ta- uh, light packages for them as well. And they honestly weren't that expensive. So I just thought, that's a simple thing, just require it. And, and at a minimum, say they could have that or the slow-moving vehicle sign. Because if you don't have blinkers, okay, yeah, we all learned in driver's ed that you gotta use your hand signals, but people don't generally do it on motorcycles and different things now, so. I was going largely off of this survey, which we haven't mentioned yet, but we had pretty good results of the survey, there was over three hundred people responded. You know, it's about two-thirds the, the people that responded supported golf carts and UTVs. So, and it was literally fifty-fifty, uh, to be specific, fifty-point-five and forty-nine-point-five on ATVs. And I'm, and, and the overwhelming comments were on safety. So I think you, either, you know, an ATV, I get it, they flip easier, they don't have a roll cage, that kinda thing, or they don't have a windscreen like a golf cart. That was one other thing I said, probably needs a windscreen if it doesn't have one. Anybody that's driven one of them and had a bug hit you in the face, you know, knows how incapacitating that is. I learned that the hard way once. So then my thoughts went to, how do you allow it? Okay, I like the twenty-five, I like, that, that makes sense to me. But I live on the north side of town, I can't get into town. I'm like, where do I want this to go? I, if we build a swimming pool, I want her to be able to take their kids to the swimming pool. I can't get in there. I mapped the routes, there's no physical way for me to get to the park in mine, way this is written. The best I can come up with is to say you allow the two vehicles that are proposed to operate within posted speed limits as long as they can achieve a minimum speed. Because obviously some, there probably needs to be something about a minimum speed. Because if you go out in one that's going ten mile an hour and you're on forty-five or fifty-five mile an hour road, you know, you're gonna get run over. And that's, that's, the minimum speed is as mu- achieving a minimum speed is as much a danger as the maximum speed in my mind. Because you're gonna get run over from the back. That's why I, also why I like lights and taillights and things that are more visible. You taught, we talked about a lot of other stuff here already, and I thought that all made sense. You definitely need insurance. Insurance is available. For what I paid for this silly thing, it's insured. And I think probably everybody that owns a utility vehicle that, you know, you, you kinda want the insurance. And you need the insurance for the other drivers on the road or, or yourself. It's, that's just common sense, I thought. I don't really have any problem with any of the other, you know, okay, let's, let's inspect it. Well, let's allow the, the licensing of it. Um, we can, we can discuss the inspection, whether it's yearly or not, that makes, I, I think there was a comment about making sure they were safe, inspecting them every year. As long as we can staff all that stuff, that made sense. The age limitation, yeah, I probably would've made bad choices under six, under eighteen myself back in the day. I bounced around there, but that was the main thing. I, my, my points were a minimum speed, just make them have blinkers, taillights. Um, I don't know, we can, I don't know if we necessarily need a horn. Make them safe, that's what people in the survey said, do it, allow it, but make them safe. And, um, figure out a, the, the best option I could think of was the minimum speed when it came to a, a faster road. So, there's my input on it.
Terry.
Yeah, you know, i- it's interesting that, I mean, golf carts, there are different flavors of golf carts, by the way. I mean, they don't all look like this. Uh, you know, gas-powered golf carts that are lifted, custom wheels on it. You know, I, I've seen them in campgrounds, I've seen them in, you know, different places. Those angles will run forty-plus miles an hour, you know? But it, and it's a golf cart, but it's got a seat in the back, it's got, you know, it's, it's set for four people. It doesn't have a place for golf clubs anymore, but it is still technically a golf cart. That's what it's sold as. It's not sold, it's not a UTV, it's not a worksite vehicle. Uh, so, you know, it's, uh, so I, I think, you know, um, it's kinda tough to say golf cart. You know, whenever you have those type, and, and I know there are those types of vehicles in this area 'cause I've seen them at the lakes. So, you know, that becomes a, becomes a challenge. I, I too own a, a UTV, um, but now it, it stays in my, only at my hunting land, it never, never comes in town. So, uh, I've dropped my insurance on it. It never goes outside the property. But while it was not there, it was here, uh, yes, it was insured. But I, I mentioned this when we first talked about it, I, I've lived in communities that, that had this ordinance. And, um, many of the folks in the neighborhoods that didn't have them were extremely frustrated with the nuisance, um, of, of the ones. And I'll be honest, quite honestly, is because you had the age requirement, but people don't follow that age requirement. You know, our police officers can't be everywhere. You know, I live just right off of Hydralic, I mean, there's motorcycles go down hydraulic seventy miles an hour. But, you know, you can't have a, a police officer there all the time. Same thing is gonna be, you're, you're gonna have twelve, fourteen-year-old kids ripping up and down the streets on these things. I can tell you that right now. So, um, that's just a fact, it'll happen.
Linda.
I, I just wanted to chime in on the driver's license. I agree that if we're letting this person operate, and I'm thinking the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, they're operating a car. I can tell you that my child's been driving our side-by-side for more years than she has had a driver's license 'cause she doesn't have it yet. And I would much rather be with her in my side-by-side on the streets than letting her drive our F-two-fifty truck on the streets while she's really learning the rules of the road. So, there's always going to be people who are not gonna follow the rules, are gonna let their twelve-year-olds drive alone, and we're never gonna stop that, and the ordinance isn't going to stop that, it's going to happen anyways. But I don't think you punish the people that obey by the rules, um, just because there's bad apples everywhere, so.
I personally, um, am against this altogether, just because I already have issues with kids driving around on their four-wheelers and, you know, already causing problems. But I have a lot of neighbors and friends that are for this. So, I think as long as it's worded correctly and we follow the, follow the rules, we see something that's not, we know that's not legal and not right, I guess all we can do is call it in and Chief's got more work to do. So, um, that's kinda where I stand on it.
I think everybody's weighed in on this.
I can summarize, John, I've written down some things that I think reflect the, the will of the council. And number one is valid driver's license, no age restrictions.
Are we good with that?
As long as somebody has a valid driver's license. And okay to drive at night if the vehicle is equipped with taillights and headlights.
Yes.
I kinda thought that maybe it was like no seatbelt requirement for golf carts or?
Terry knows a little, go ahead.
If, if manufactured with, I would say, required.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I think there's something, you know, the add-on seat belts, you know, if it's manufactured with seat belts, I think it'd be required, yes.
I like that.
There's a couple of things that I might point out here that, that are not reflected in the ordinance because they kind of make an assumption that the ordinance is made possible by state law, which gives a carve-out, you know, for cities, that if they want to, they can permit the operation of some of these vehicles. But then there are certain things in state law that are required regardless, and cities can't, it's a minimum requirement and cities can't lessen that requirement. So, for instance, all of them require a valid driver's license. So this, it wouldn't be like that the city would need to make that a requirement, it's already required by state law. Seat belts for all of these are required if they're manufactured with seat belts. So if they're not manufactured with seat belts, then they're not required. Uh, the lights, headlights, not only headlights but taillights, uh, turn signals and brake lights are all required if they're operated after dark, between sunset and sunrise. That's the state law. And then for golf carts only, the slow-moving vehicle emblem is required by state law, the others are not. So that would be, that wouldn't be a requirement for, and then the insurance is optional. That's, cities can require that, but it's not required by state law.
I think we're gonna require it. Liability. Okay, I think we're on a roll.
Yep, the other, uh, yeah, and, and I don't know if, Linda, were you suggesting annual registration? I, I'm sorry, I don't hear so well sometimes.
I would suggest annual registration, I'm not, I wouldn't fight for it. But it just seems to me it's, it's a privilege to be able to drive them around, and I think sometimes privilege is cost. And I think it helps to ensure that they're maintaining their insurance year-round on these particular vehicles and we're, we maintain coverage of, you know, the li- lack of liability for us to be able to have them on the road.
And then the, the other big one, which maybe needs some help on as far as a description because I'm not as familiar with the city and the problems that, that you were identifying, that you, that you would have personally in ma- in moving from one place in the city to another, that for at least UTVs and, I guess, certain minimum speed, uh, golf carts, that there would be some, some routes or some segments of, uh, of streets that were, uh, within the city with speed limits greater than twenty-five miles per hour where these would be allowed. I mean, I can certainly draw, I can, anything that you want me to, I can put in the ordinance.
Tell me this, would this make this easier? Like, if the way you wrote it up to us now, crossing streets and stuff like that is okay in a golf cart, but UTVs are allowed in the city?
Yeah, I mean, if that's.
I think, I, I just think that's a lot easier. Like, and, and if you think about it, golf carts, I know you were talking about lift kits and all this stuff, but they're not made the same to drive on a higher-speed road. Crossing them is gonna be okay. But I think the braking of them, I mean, every bit of those is not as safe. And most of them don't have brake lights and I, I just, to me, like, I'm most comfortable with that. Does anybody have any issues with that?
No. That's easy, I, I appreciate that, because that makes, I didn't write this, by the way, this came from the chief. And I wouldn't write it like this, it's got way too much stuff in it. What you'll see, what you'll see when I come back will be hopefully a lot simpler. But yeah, that, yeah, that makes things a lot simpler.
So you're saying as long as they can maintain the speed of the road?
No.
That's what I'm asking.
UTVs are good on anywhere in the city.
That's what I'm saying, as long as they can maintain that speed of that road, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't even do the speed thing because UTVs can just go faster. But like a golf cart.
Golf carts are not allowed within, you know, unless the speed limit is twenty-five.
Golf carts are what was written in his proposal. It's very restrictive, like they can cross streets, that's it, otherwise residential streets.
I just thought of this, but is there any, uh, state or federal regulation crossing under interstate?
No.
As long as you're not on the interstate.
Yeah, you sure can't get on the interstate, but under it, just making sure.
Okay, well, did you have a concern?
Chief, if I could, chief, what's the speed limit of hydraulic?
Which part?
The north part up around Eighty-Fifth Street.
Fifty-five, five, I believe.
Five is Eighty-Fifth Street, but is hydra- hydraulic's not fifty-five?
It's fifty-five until you hit the bridge at Sixty-Ninth in hydraulic and that turns to thirty-five. Forty.
Forty?
Yeah, going, going north on hydraulic is fifty-five. I just, I just came in from that way a little bit earlier for the meeting, so.
I, I applaud your efforts, sir, I just, me personally, I still have a, I personally would have a problem with any vehicle such as these in, on a fifty-five mile an hour road, Perry. I, I get that that somewhat isolates certain communities. That's just, I'm sorry, to me, facts of life. That's, there's certain things I don't have access to where I live because I don't have sidewalks or I don't have this or I don't, I, I wouldn't. It just makes me a little bit nervous to have a UTV. I, I do own a UTV, top speed is twenty-nine miles an hour, and I would not drive that on a fifty-five mile an hour road. And it's got all the turn signals, blinkers and everything, but it's not insured because I don't ever drive it on the roads. So, but that just makes me nervous, but that's your call, sir.
We had everything fixed, Sean.
Again, sir, just a personal opinion.
I got you, that's, that's why we had the discussion, I mean.
I, I have one final question, kind of for the group, and that's the sidewalk issue. Right now, my inclination would be to, to add sidewalk as a definition at the top there and make it the same as the state, which is what we all think of as sidewalks. So that these vehicles would then be allowed, unless I do something different, on, on bike paths and on walking paths that are like, you know, what is that, High Ridge where? Anyway, all, and, and we're, we're getting, we're getting into that business with expanding our bike paths and our, our walking paths in the city. So, that's, that's really the question. You want me, you wanna be, you wanna keep it off all sidewalks and have be defined sidewalks very broadly? Or just sidewalks that are between the curb and the adjacent property lines?
All sidewalks, all sidewalks. Like in my opinion, if you're driving on the road, you don't need to drive on the sidewalk.
I can't think of a reason to be on the sidewalk.
I, I would, I would agree, I mean, I, I just, the example I'm gonna use is the, the, the paths on Grove Street. Grove Street Parks up through there. There's no reason to have a motorized vehicle on those walking paths through Grove Street Parks. None.
I'll define it expansively.
Is it defined elsewhere?
It's defined by, well, the Attorney General has made, issued an opinion, so, eh, you know, for what that's worth. But, but i- in, in connection with that restriction. But in connection with that restriction in state statute about these sorts of vehicles. And the opinion of the Attorney General was sidewalk, when it's not defined any further, only applies to those that are, you know, again, I call them traditional sidewalks. Yeah. So I'll make it broad. No sidewalks.
So I guess what I'm asking is, I feel like this ordinance is being made to drive on the streets, and it's a good place to put in there, you can't drive on the sidewalks. But elsewhere, do we prohibit driving on the sidewalks?
Elsewhere? Oh, like motorcycle?
N S T O in the ordinances. So in other words, like right now, this ordinance is not in effect. Is it prohibited?
Is driving one on the sidewalk prohibited?
Yeah, what they're saying is happening.
Yeah.
Is prohibited already, right?
Just as a blanket statement, it's prohibited.
It's already prohibited. This is just also a good place to park it so that when people get the ordinance and they find out that, hey, I can do this, but I can't do the sidewalk. Okay.
Okay.
So I say we want to match, if it's already in there, we already prohibit it, probably want to match pretty similar, but maybe even be more descriptive in the definition of it. Thank you. Any other questions or anything else we need to cover on questions of what we're doing? Is everybody good with the $25? Do we think that's lower that, less than that?
It's fine. I'm going to have to go buy an ATV, or not, a UTV.
I'm not buying one. I'm going to borrow your guy's.
Lot cheaper.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're clear, Doug?
Yes.
Sure. And Phil? Everything's good?
All right.
Okay, so no action taken on that. Next, we have governing body reports. Charlie's not here tonight, so George, you're first up.
Yeah, I thought we had some good discussion tonight, you know, in moving Park City forward. There's so many things that we have to look at. And the Park Center thing behind us, I think is just kind of exploding. It's taking off and some of the things that we're seeing. So that's a good thing for Park City. Also wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter as we celebrate the resurrection of our Lord and Savior. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Lynda?
Agreed. Great discussion tonight. Excited for the last topic. It hits home for me, so I do appreciate that and looking forward to our Easter egg hunt in the park.
Glad you got that. Charles?
Yeah, I think we had a great discussion. We had participation by everybody. Of course, it makes the meetings last a little bit longer, but it was a good meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Nothing additional for me. It's all been said.
I really don't have anything. I am looking forward to the Easter egg hunt. We went last year, had a ball. So everybody's excited for that. That's all I've got.
Very good. Brandy?
I have nothing tonight.
And Jim?
Just, I think the only thing that hasn't been addressed is fall tree and limb cleanup. Are you going to touch on that, John? Okay, I'll just, I'll kick that to you. Well, I don't have it in front of me. It's, I don't know the hours. It's Easter weekend, so that's why I'm bringing it to attention.
All right, so Brushing Limb Cleanup Day, Saturday, April 19th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., west end of McLean Park. And also is the Easter egg hunt. Also, this is on Easter weekend on April 19th. Starts at 10:00 a.m. and it goes very fast. If you're late, you will probably miss it.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Get there early.
Yes, it happens very quick. So, and for many people asking questions, why would we do Citywide Cleanup Day at the same time as the Easter egg hunt? The Citywide Cleanup Day is always the third Saturday of April. That's why that unfortunately happened, but we'll deal with it. So, next, new home permits issued year-to-date. We had six additional in March. We are now 56 year-to-date, whereas last year we had 153 for the entire year. So we're on pretty good track here. All right, with that, that's all I have. I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Terry?
I move to adjourn.
And Jim?
Second.
Motion by Terry, second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.